A sold out crowd at the Forum in LA with
Philly Island.
Blink one eighty-two. Black Keys. And so much more. See it all at iHeartRadio.com.
Radio 1045 Traffic.
Traffic is still really backed up ninety-five northbound crawling approaching the airport all the way up to Broad Street. That was the scene of an earlier crash. All lanes are open, but traffic is still really backed up. Was out there about four hours. Southbound ninety-five jam Betsy Ross to Jabar then approaching Broad with an accident on the shoulder. Jam traffic on the Skookle eastbound Blue Ridge to Belmont Montgomery Drive to south, westbound Heavy University to Vine and approaching City Avenue to Belmont. Lot Bridge eastbound jam the hallway heading into South Philadelphia and westbound jam twenty-six to midspan with a disabled truck in the left lane. Large to tell the total traffic.
Sponsored by Farmers Insurance.
We are farmers.
Winter means it's time to bundle up your insurance. Bundle home and auto with Farmers and you can save an average of twenty percent. Call one eight hundred Farmers to get a quote today.
We are farmers.
Reported twenty eighteen nationwide average savings underwritten by Farmers Traffic Insurance Exchanges and Affiliates. Probably sound available in every state.
I'm not a big talker. I am a big doer, but sometimes the only way to solve the problem is to get on the horn and figure it out. So the only people I like talking to? Granger. With knowledgeable product experts, ready with the answers to my toughest questions, calling Granger is the one conversation I don't mind having. From machining and motor parts to valves and vacuum pumps, when it comes to solving my problems, Granger's got my back. Call, click Granger dot com or stop by to see for yourself. Granger, for the ones who get it.
The holidays can be filled with great surprises, like getting an unexpected gift. But if you're selling or trading in your car, surprises can ruin your day. Like being stood up for a test drive or getting a quote with no explanation of the number. Well, now there's a better way with TrueCar. TrueCar shows you your car's value as you're entering the details so you understand the number. You'll get a cash offer in minutes and then you can bring your car to your local certified dealer to cash out or trade in. So when you're ready to discover, buy or sell your next car, visit TrueCar.
Opposites attract this winter at Longwood Gardens during Orchid Extravaganza. Explore an indoor world of whimsy and warmth amid thousands of vibrant and blooming orchids. Outdoors stroll our serene winter landscape, featuring acres of nature's quiet beauty. Experience Orchid Extravaganza on view now through March twenty-second at Longwood Gardens. Purchase time tickets at LongwoodGardens.org.
We make USAA insurance for busy moms like Kate. She's a veteran made of flexibility to get everything done on time, like dropping off her kids at three different schools, driving to pick up supplies for her latest do it yourself project, remodeling her bathroom floor. So when another car accidentally bumps into hers, damaging her bumper and her taillight, Kate wasn't going to let a little fender bender put a dent in her schedule. With just a few taps on her USAA mobile app, Kate filed her claim and was back on track. USAA Insurance has made the way members like Kate needed. Easy. USAA even has payment plans that are flexible because Kate's schedule isn't, so she can get back to getting it all done. Switch and save with USAA Auto Insurance. Get a quote today at USAA dot com slash insurance. USAA, what you're made of, we're made for. Ability to receive a quote depends on membership eligibility. Membership eligibility and product restrictions apply and are subject to change. Restrictions may apply to installment payment options. United Services Automobile Association and its affiliates in San Antonio, Texas.
That? That's the sound of Nyquil Severe, hard at work. Nyquil Severe is the best sleep with a cold medicine. No tossing and turning, just rest and recovery. So you're ready to take on tomorrow for powerful relief of your...
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors meeting for January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. As we usually do, we'll start off with a moment of silence, then followed by the Pledge Allegiance. If you all will take a moment of silence. Stand with the board for a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lewis, any changes or additions to the agenda tonight?
One change, Mr. Chairman. The item under eleven B one related to Toll Brothers conditional use will be moved up under item number six, public comment.
Very good. Thank you. We have no special actions, so we are into our first session of public comment. Anyone who wants to come up to the podium and say anything that is not on the agenda tonight, please feel free to do so. Okay, seeing none. Oh, there is? Oh, yeah, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I appreciate you giving me a little bit of your time tonight and I congratulate Mr. Mack, Mr. Fisher on your reelection and wish you the best of luck in your terms here as supervisors. I'm really making my way around the county to introduce myself. My name, for those who don't know, is Bob Harvey. I'm one of the new county commissioners. And so we were sworn in, myself and Commissioner Marsegley, Commissioner Dejolomo were sworn in on the sixth. And so we've been sort of hitting the ground running. I came from Falls Township, Rob's a supervisor, like you gentlemen are here, and I was there for sixteen years. So there's some overlap between township and county government, but there's certainly enough new stuff to keep me busy. Really just coming to let you know that we are committed to making an effort to improve the cooperation and communication between county government and local governments. We want to do everything we can to help you make life here in Newtown Township better for all the residents. And any questions you have, concerns, please don't hesitate to bring them up to us and we'll do everything we can to help you out. A couple of little points of information. The county is doing, the Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission is doing free training in three different locations throughout the county this winter-spring regarding the use of Narcan. As we know, the opioid crisis has hit Pennsylvania and especially Bucks County pretty hard. And the first session, which is free, open to the public, is actually tomorrow night at Jefferson Hospital in, it's actually Falls Township, right across from Oxford Valley Mall. Anybody who attends, any family that attends will receive one free dose of Narcan and they'll be training on how to use it. There will be other trainings. The next one in March, I believe, is in Sellersville, and then there's one in Doylestown in May. And now they're all advertised on the county website. And the other major point of information I wanted to share with you is about the new voting machines. As you may be aware, the outgoing county commissioners purchased new voting machines, clear access or clear ballot, excuse me, voting machines. They are, coming from my background as a teacher, they're very much like the tests you took in school, the SATs or the bubble sheets. You fill in the bubble for who you want and you put it through a scanner. The scanner is about the size of a desktop printer that you'd have in your house. And there's a screen that you can interact with that'll ask you, it'll point out any mistakes you may have made. For example, if there were two supervisors up for election and you voted for three, it'll let you know that you overvoted and it'll spit it back out at you and you can make the correction and resubmit. And it is verifiable. Obviously, the paper ballot is marked by the voter. It goes into a canvas bag that's attached to the back of the machine. So if there's any malfunctions with the machine itself, you have the paper ballots to go back and do recounts. Those machines are already started to arrive in the county. We've received dozens and dozens of them already. They're coming in every day by truck. And so we're very confident that we're going to have everything up and ready to go. We are losing a month of prep time because in a presidential election year, the primary is in April, not in May, as it usually is. We are going to get a little bit of a trial run in March. Commissioner Dejolomo, of course, his seat as a state representative in Ben Salem, there's a special election for that. So we're going to get a chance to try these machines out and see how they work. There is going to be training for all poll workers. Anybody who works inside the polls, judges of elections, machine operators, inspectors, they should have already received information about training that they'll have on the machines conducted by the Board of Elections. There's also going to be demonstrations on the new machines, open to the public. The first one in February, I think toward the end of February is actually at Bucks County Technical High School in Ferals Hills. At all the commissioners' meetings starting in February, there'll be a machine and sample ballots you can use to kind of get a handle on how to use these. We are going to be working a lot with the League of Voters to make sure we're sharing information about how these machines operate and getting people familiar with the machines. Do our best. There is a whole schedule of trainings and also a schedule of demonstrations that's also available on the county website and also through social media. The Board of Elections has a Facebook page and the Bucks County Government has a Facebook page. And if you want to take a look at that, the information's on there. And we're going to do our best to get that to you and you can share it as well on your social media so that the more the word gets out, the better. So those are a couple of little pieces of information I wanted to share. And if you had any questions for me, but otherwise I'll let you get on with your business.
I had a question. The machine gives you a receipt that a human being can read and confirm that that was exactly how they voted?
It doesn't give an immediate receipt to the voter. There was a machine, I think, that was demonstrated that one of the five options, I think, did do that. This one does spit out a receipt, it looks like a receipt, at the end of the night. That is for the poll workers themselves, very much like what the Danaher, the outgoing machines did. It gave you an idea of how many people voted for Mack, how many people voted for Fisher, how many people voted for, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so that's...
But it doesn't tell the voter that, I guess, how they voted?
It gives, it asks for confirmation. As you put your ballot in, believe on the screen, it does pop up and you can, yes, I want to vote. And you can, at that point, you can say, no, wait, never mind, I changed my mind. And it'll spit back at you. You change it, you put it back again. Once you say, yes, I confirm, it goes into the back, into the canvas sealed bag in the back, and you don't get it back at that point.
And these machines are not connected to the internet?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Yep, sure.
I just have a question for those of us who work the polls and do the count at night. Will it make the count easier?
It should. And the one thing, Mr. Chairman, that I neglected to mention, forgot to mention, the state passed a law that did change the process for absentee ballots and also mail-in ballots. So effective, I believe, the primary, it might be after the primary, you'll be able to actually get a ballot mailed to you if you don't want to go vote in person, if you know you're going to be away, if you're not sure about your work schedule and you just want to get the ballot mailed to you ahead of time, you can do that and just mail it back. All those absentees and mail-ins will not be sent to the precincts. They're kept in Doylestown, so you won't be doing that count at the end of the night in terms of going through all the absentee ballots. That won't happen.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Now, the one thing, now, the one thing that'll slow down is that all those absentee ballots, of course, are going up to Doylestown and it's going to take a while for all them to get counted. So the speed with which the Board of Elections is able to give you answers to elections, that's going to be slower. You're not going to have as much of an immediate gratification, I guess, or maybe disappointment, depending who you are, as you're used to.
In a close race, it'll be very...
Correct.
Important, sure.
Right.
Excellent. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. You too.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay. Just want to make sure I didn't miss anybody. Seeing none, I guess we'll go to our, the one that's moved up, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager, rather. Toll Brothers Conditional Use, continue hearing for the...
At this time, I will defer to the solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager, Mr. Solicitor, everybody. We have received a correspondence from the applicant Toll Brothers in this case requesting a continuance of the conditional use hearing that was previously opened on the record. The continuance is requested until February twelfth, two thousand and twenty. And at this time, while we're on the record, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to continue the hearing until Wednesday, February twelfth, two thousand and twenty, at seven o'clock PM at the Newtown Township Building.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
That motion is second. Any questions for the board? Mr. Solicitor, can you just explain, because I know a lot of people are interested in this particular topic, what the continuance is about?
I don't want to read their minds. I believe that there is a revised plan being submitted to the township and it involves the elimination of an on-lot sewage disposal system and the incorporation of public sewer to the proposed development. And that plan, I would guess, is not quite ready. It does have to be reviewed by the township's professionals and according to the applicant, should be ready to go on February twelfth.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I have a motion and a second. Any questions from the public on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Pass this for zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now we're on to minor approvals. Historical Architectural Review Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. At our January eighth meeting of the Historic Architectural Review Board, we reviewed an application for a certificate of appropriateness on a wooden sign on the rear of the building for a business called Be Bronzed. And I believe the owner of the business is here and can answer any questions you have.
I am. I'm here.
Well, I'm just assuming by the name Be Bronze what it is, but why don't you explain your business and let everybody know?
I'm here. So we offer custom spray tanning for all your adventures, whatever you need. So you need a little glow? We're here. We're next to the Sycamore Grill. They're back patio.
Very good. Mr. Solicitor?
Yes.
A motion?
A motion to... Turn my mic on. A motion to turn my mic on. A motion to approve the application of Be Bronzed for a certificate of appropriateness at two seventy-one North Sycamore Street for a sign at the rear of the building.
Okay. I have such a motion.
Does it move?
You have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Pass this for zero. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all we reviewed at our...
Thank you. And next, we have consideration to approve the two thousand and sixteen Act five thirty-seven Plan.
Hello, good evening. I'm here tonight to ask for a motion to approve the revisions to the Newtown Township Act five thirty-seven Plan update. The Board of Supervisors approved the Act five thirty-seven Plan update back in two thousand and fifteen. At that time, the township approved the comprehensive plan for the existing, the present, and the future sewage needs of the township. And basically, at that time, they said that the public sewer system was going to remain where it is. And I brought with me figure eleven for the audience and for you to see. And that the Conservation Management zoning district was going to be the area where the on-lot disposal systems were going to be the method to treat the sewage. As you can see from figure eleven, the Conservation Management District has a whole lot of public sewer system. But again, at that time, the Board of Supervisors approved the Act five thirty-seven Plan update, and this was going to be the way that you were going to address your sewage needs. So it was approved in July of two thousand and fifteen. It was sent to DEP for approval. Later that year, by the end of that year, we got a review letter back from DEP that had three comments on it. One was a, we had to fix the flows in one of the tables. The second had to do with the conveyance system. Newtown Township has their sewer system, it goes through a series of pipes, the collection system, that then flows into a conveyance system that is owned by the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. The conveyance system then flows into a wastewater treatment plant that is located in the city of Philadelphia. It's the northeast water pollution plant. The last two comments in the DEP review letter said, hold it, stop, there's an overload in that conveyance system, which is the Nishami Interceptor. Those comments had to be addressed before the DEP would approve your Act five thirty-seven Plan. So in that time, between December of two thousand and fifteen and now, Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority was working to address those comments for all of its participating municipalities. One of the items was that an agreement had to be executed between the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority and the Newtown Bucks County Joint Municipal Authority, which I'm just going to say Newtown Authority from here on out. That agreement was finally executed in September of last year, so it took the better part of four years to work that out. And in that agreement, Bucks County Water and Sewer said how they were going to address their overload in their conveyance system again. Another thing that had to be in that agreement is an INI program abatement, INI abatement program. The Newtown Authority had to say how it was going to reduce the inflow and infiltration entering its system. INI is the extraneous water, the clean water that enters a sewer system. Every sanitary sewer system has a certain amount of INI, but you don't want too much because you don't want a sanitary treatment plant treating clean water. So that INI program was done and completed by the Newtown Authority in December of two thousand and nineteen. It is now included in this plan. So we have addressed those two comments. Well, Bucks County Water and Sewer did most of the work for us to address the latter two comments, and they are included in the Act five thirty-seven Plan, which is before you tonight. I refer to figure eleven, which shows the present and the future sewer service areas. The future sewer service area is exactly the same as the existing sewer service area with one exception. We included the proposed development at the intersection of Twining Bridge Road and Durham Road into the future sewer service area. I think I'll stop there and see if you guys have any questions.
Just to be clear, that is the same project, the same housing project that we referred to in the solicitor's report for Toll Brothers?
It is.
I have a question on table four. I think it's item fifty-one for ten EDUs. Does that refer to the commercial development that Newtown bypassed in Lower Silver Lake Road? That was in your memo? You have a...
No. That refers to the, it's the Goodno Homestead site that refers to the development at Silo Drive and Sycamore Street. That was, there was a sketch plan presented to township staff. I think there was a couple sketch plans presented just to township staff about that development, and they expected that with that development, they would need fifty-six EDUs.
Okay. That's item fifty-four. Did I misquote the one I was talking about? Item fifty-one for ten EDUs?
That is the one at the intersection of the bypass and it is the proposed convenience store fueling station.
So a convenience store gas station would require ten EDUs. Can you explain what an EDU is?
Sure. It's, EDU stands for equivalent dwelling unit. It is the amount of sewage generated from a single-family home. A single-family home, according to the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, generates two hundred and fifty gallons per day of sewage. The Newtown Authority says that that number is two hundred and forty-two point one gallons per day. So if you use two hundred and fifty gallons per day and you have a development, a commercial development, that's going to generate one thousand gallons per day, it's four equivalent dwelling units.
So a commercial development like that, I mean, anything that goes down the drain, like from a kitchen sink or a toilet, would be measured for those EDUs?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
And so I guess the opinion is, is that a convenience store like this must be connected to a public sewer system? Otherwise, it's not going to be feasible for that operation?
No, I wouldn't say that. There's convenience facilities that have on-lot disposal systems.
Okay. Thank you. So, Michelle, with the passing of this tonight, it would make it very feasible for the potential Toll Brothers to tap into our sewer lines?
It is the first step in the process. First, you put it into the public sewer system in your five thirty-seven Plan, and then when they submit preliminary land development plans and conditional use plans, they will submit a planning module, which goes through the process of showing you how they are going to collect and treat their sewage.
And they have a proposed forty-five EDUs available to them?
That is correct. We asked them for a sketch of their proposed sewer system, and that is what they showed us.
Let me ask you a question. If they were to propose forty-six homes, does that cause a problem with only forty-five EDUs being available? Would they have to apply for additional?
They would...
I'm not saying that's going to happen. I'm just throwing it out.
Sure. So we included them in the Act five thirty-seven Plan in a public sewered area. So right now, they're shown in an area that is to have public sewers as opposed to on-lot disposal systems. So again, that's the first step. We are required with the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority and DEP to plan for future needs. Right now, we're planning for forty-five EDUs for that development. In this table that Mr. Mack referred to, we also have a miscellaneous residential and a miscellaneous non-residential category. So if there were some more EDUs needed, I'm sure we could take them from those categories.
And we're using EDUs from, we're up to two thousand and seventeen, so we should be getting additional EDUs as time goes on, correct?
All right. So when DEP said, stop, everybody, there's an overload in the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority conveyance system, they required Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority to have a connection management plan and a connection action plan. The management plan basically said to all of their participating municipalities, tell us how many EDUs you need for the next several years, which Newtown Township had to do. The connection action plan, which both were approved by DEP, said when those EDUs would be released per year. In order to have the two thousand and fourteen and fifteen EDUs approved, each municipality had to have a plan of study approved by DEP for an Act five thirty-seven Plan update and a task activity report approved. So that's for two thousand and fifteen EDUs, which you now have. In order to get two thousand and sixteen EDUs released, so we're now into two thousand and twenty, and we're talking about two thousand and sixteen EDUs, you have to have an approved Act five thirty-seven Plan and that agreement signed between your authority and the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. So the sixteen, two thousand and sixteen EDUs will be released when the Act five thirty-seven Plan is approved.
I'm sorry, Dennis. And that approval will first of all come from us and then DEP has to approve it as well?
Yes. If the board is inclined to approve, have the motion to approve this plan tonight, it will then be submitted to DEP for approval.
Do you have any timeline for how long it takes the DEP to approve this plan?
I believe they have ninety days to review it.
Thank you. Michelle, do we have a maximum count of how many EDUs we may possibly need going forward? I mean, we could guesstimate on anticipated development businesses and so on. Is there some sort of number out there that we are shooting for or we already have?
So when we first started the needs analysis that generated... So when we first started the needs analysis that generated into the connection management plan, we, the township, township staff asked developers, they asked developers' attorneys, "What projects do you have out there? What kind of EDUs do you need?" And that helped us generate the list. We did the same thing since 2015 to now. Developers that have talked to the township manager, developers and projects that have come in with sketch plans, we included all of them into your future needs analysis and put them either into 2016 year or the year 2017. So if you're asking me what that number is?
I'm asking you what that number is.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flabro. In 2016, we are showing 381 EDUs, and in 2017, we're showing 277. But in those tallies, it includes, for 2016, for example, 105 miscellaneous non-residential and 50 miscellaneous residential.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions from the public?
Phil, are you...
Yes, yeah, sure.
My name is Jack Brodeur, just speaking as a Newtown Township resident. Phil, you'll remember this, but this goes back maybe five or six years. At the time, to address this shortage of EDU issue, there was a, what I would term as an ill-conceived proposal to spend $60 million to develop a sewage treatment plant in Newtown Township because we couldn't work out the problems with Bucks County Water and Sewer and the conveyance system issues and so forth. So our local authority was suggesting that we just get off of the conveyance system and do the sewage treatment plant ourselves. You'll remember, it was a pretty...
Absolutely.
...controversial public issue.
I won't say it was a messy issue.
At the time, and we really appreciated how the Board of Supervisors worked through that challenge. There was a resolution passed, I believe, that would state explicitly that that would not be a consideration and part of any future 537 plans that were developed. So my question is simple. I didn't know that this was on the agenda tonight, so this is coincidental. Before we approve, before you approve a 537 plan to go to DEP, I'm asking the question maybe to Michelle, was that explicitly excluded as a feasible option going forward? Because my understanding is if it's in there as an option, it can still happen one day.
It is not included in the Act 537 plan as a viable option.
Thanks, Jack. Any other comments from the, or questions from the public? Okay. Mr. Solicitor, if we, a motion is formed here?
Yes, I believe the township planner framed the motion. It would be a motion to approve the revised Act 537 Sewage Facilities Plan update for Newtown Township and to send it to DEP for approval.
All right, do you have such a motion?
Second?
No, a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any further questions from the board? Any from the public on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5, 4, 0. Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks for making it easy to understand.
Next on the agenda, nope, we have no public hearing. We're reports of committee, committees, boards, and commissions. The Planning Commission. Mrs. Driscoll?
Good evening. Peggy Driscoll, Vice Chair of Newtown Township Planning Commission. We met last night. First order of business we had was a zoning hearing board application for Newtown Bucks Associates on West Road. It's the Newtown Shopping Center. The applicant is seeking variances for a proposed 12,500-square-foot retail building to house an Old Navy with 80 parking spaces and a 400-square-foot addition to Chick-fil-A along with roadway improvements to eliminate traffic congestion in the surrounding area. The commission supports the application for relief. Our next item was the JMZO amendment. After two meetings and much discussion, the Planning Commission recommends the Board of Supervisors forward the draft of the ordinance to our partners in the jointure along with the Bucks County Planning Commission with the following suggested changes. To eliminate the eat-in dining, which is Section 13-3. To limit fuel pumps to eight and permit up to four electric charging stations. To specify the hours of operation and limit them to 18 per day. And make sidewalks a requirement, which is Section 13-19, and remove the word "if." Additionally, the planner will be looking at specifics around the facades of the fuel pump area and fencing to ensure that they are keeping with the character and architecture of the building. And that was all we had.
Any questions for Mrs. Driscoll?
Yes, regarding the roadway improvements to eliminate traffic congestion around Chick-fil-A, can you give us a little more detail what those improvements are?
Yes, coming in off of 413, when you pull into the shopping center and make the right at Applebee's, the congestion, the backup is constant there. And what they are proposing is to take the either two or three islands there to make a right turn lane into the Chick-fil-A drive-through. They think, you know, the cars are always queuing there, and it's creating a little bit of havoc there. And the addition they are proposing is on the back of the building. It's 400 square feet. It's strictly the kitchen. Apparently, they can't keep up with the demand. They need more kitchen space there.
And the Old Navy, where exactly did they propose that?
Where, Dogs and Cats Rule and Bed Bath &amp; Beyond on the pad there. I mean, this, I think that pad was always intended to be developed.
What do you mean by the pad? I'm sorry.
Well, the site pad there. It's the area backs up to the high school.
Particular area that can, that's been safe?
Yes.
For possible development, which is now going to happen?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's going to be a separate building?
Yes.
Not connected to Bed Bath &amp; Beyond or anything?
No, it's going to be a freestanding building, and there is reserved parking there, which has been there for...
Like that reserved green park, parking?
Yes, mhm.
Okay. With regard to the JMZO, the eliminate eat-in dining, any discussion on that of why you wanted to eliminate that?
Well, I think we, you were there last night. We have a lot of opinions, a lot of differing opinions on this ordinance. I think that the commission feels it's just not needed. I think the main worry is maybe kids going in there and hanging out, and I don't think any of the Wawa's have them or any of the, you know, convenience stores have eat-in areas, and we just decided to eliminate that.
So the four charging stations, that's just a recommendation, not a requirement?
Right.
And I guess people would have to sit in their cars while they're being charged and eat their hoagies?
Well, I think it takes quite a while to charge.
Right.
A car. I'm not positive about that, but I just think it was consensus to eliminate the, I think it was maybe what, 10 square? It was small, the area that they had proposed in there, but that was the consensus of the board. We had one member that was for it, but the, most of us were not.
And the hours of operation, you didn't specify the exact hours. That would be up to the convenience store, I guess?
Well, most of them operate 24 hours. We feel that, I mean, there are no other businesses that we are aware of in the township that operate 24 hours.
But this applies to the jointure, right? Other townships as well?
Yes.
In the jointure?
Well, you know, we could have, we could spend a lot more time on this, believe me. We could go back and forth for a long time on all the items in this ordinance, but we are, we were told we're under kind of a time crunch, and it needs to go to Upper Makefield to Wrightstown Township. Their Planning Commissions, their Board of Supervisors. And hopefully, we can all get together and come to some kind of consensus on this ordinance. And this ordinance also is not E25, it is now E30.
Right.
Because apparently, there were five ordinances introduced to the JMZO that we were not aware of. The Planning Commission, we would actually like to see what they are, whether they pertain to Newtown or not. We would just like to...
E25 was Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, not Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, B&amp;B, a brewery, yeah.
A brewery in Wrightstown?
Wherever, yeah.
Okay. But the other four, we don't know what they were.
The last thing, I think, is, what was the last thing? I'm having a senior moment, sorry. Sidewalks?
I'm reading your mind.
Fuel pumps? Fuel pumps? Oh, I was going to ask. Somebody revealed at the meeting last night that you could drive up to a gas station here in town, even after it's closed, and use the pumps? Is that correct?
That's what they said, yeah, mhm.
I never, I never knew that. So the gas facility there would still be available 24 hours a day wherever this is?
They could shut them off.
They could, if they wanted to, yeah.
I think some of the, I think someone mentioned some of the gas stations in the township do not, you cannot, but I believe they mentioned there was one that you can go to.
You don't want to tell us what?
No.
Mr. Driscoll, the report does not, does not capture all the rich discussion that happened last night. There was a lot of back and forth and a lot of suggestions. I mean, these are, these are the, some of the things that, in that discussion that came out that we would like to propose. And as we've said, they have, whatever we like currently is probably going to be changed and modified by suggestions from Upper Makefield and Wrightstown, and maybe by the time it comes back to us, we'll want to change some things, too.
Right. Well, the allowable districts, too, for this ordinance, you know, the other townships, I don't believe they've seen it yet. So I'm sure that's going to be a big topic of discussion.
Probably some urgency to get...
To get it to them, yes.
There was a discussion about which zoning districts we would like to see, or would or wouldn't, but we would permit the convenience store gas station use. They were like Office Research, Light Industrial Office?
OLI?
Yeah.
And the PC.
There were...
So there are four districts.
Commercial, well, yeah, in Newtown.
Yeah, plain commercial, yes.
And then for Upper Makefield?
And then Upper Makefield, there was one, which I believe was the R1, and then three in Wrightstown Township.
The Village Commercial?
Yeah, yeah. Was it Village, Village Commercial, yeah. One and two.
Yeah.
And one other. I mean, there were some districts that we have in Newtown that Wrightstown does not have.
Right.
Same with Upper Makefield. They have districts that neither Wrightstown or Newtown have. So it's, it can...
We'll continue the discussion and make the decision.
Yeah.
Hopefully, before...
Well, it's like I said, we could go for many rounds and many hours with this.
Well, this is on the agenda, consideration to send this right now to the jointure. I guess we can have further discussion at that point.
When we get to that point? Yeah, we could just send it as is. We could, we could add the recommendations or a letter from the Planning Commission, but like Mr. Fisher said, it's probably going to get chopped apart as it goes through the jointure, so we're going to have a little bit more discussion on this. In regards to some of the zoning areas, Mr. Solicitor, can you explain why we look at some particular areas in regards to the jointure?
Well, I think anytime you're attempting to add a new use to a zoning ordinance, you want to put it in the, in the area or areas of a township, or in this case, three townships, that makes the most sense, that you're not going to put a gas station and convenience store right in the middle of a existing residential development. It's got to make sense. So when we took a look at the entire jointure, we looked at Newtown Township and the districts that Ms. Driscoll has listed were considered, and we took a look at both Wrightstown and Upper Makefield Township as well to see where it would be likely or logical for one of these uses to be placed that would make sense. Again, not in the middle of a residential area, but in a commercially, generally commercially or industrially zoned area. And we came up with at least one area in Wrightstown and one area in Upper Makefield in various zoning districts that we thought it would make sense to have this use.
Correct. I think we had four in Newtown, three in Wrightstown, and one in Upper Makefield. And I think a few of us on the Planning Commission felt that maybe it should be more of a level playing field, that Newtown is absorbing more than the other townships.
When you say four and three and one, is that parcels?
Yes, four districts.
Individual?
Four districts in Newtown.
Oh, districts?
The zoning districts, yes.
Yeah, and again, Wrightstown and Upper Makefield are less developed than Newtown, and I don't know that they have as many commercial, industrial type of districts. I mean, you're not going to, this can't go into a quarry district because quarries are there. And, you know, a lot of Upper Makefield is Conservation Management or Jericho Mountain, and that's, there's areas designed to be the watershed for the jointure. That was the original idea, so it seems silly to put a gas station convenience store use in those areas. But we took a look at the logical areas, and we found a few areas in those, too, that seemed to be right for the use, and we'll see what they say.
Okay.
Also, with the creation of these different zoning areas, it, doesn't it protect the township as not being the only exclusive area for something like this to go into? So that, you know, we always say Wawa, but it's a gas station, it could be anything, Sheetz, Royal Farms, whatever. That we're not the only game in town. We can, we can fight with the ability to say, there's these parcels in Wrightstown, these parcels in Upper Makefield, which in this case makes having three townships in a jointure kind of advantageous in regards to protecting the township.
Yeah, I agree. I think that it's clear that Newtown has absorbed the massive lion's share of the development, both residential and commercial, in the jointure. But again, the jointure was formed for a purpose, and each of the townships has its purpose, but we felt that Newtown shouldn't stand alone and absorb this use, that the other two townships ought to get involved and provide for this use as well.
I looked at the zone in Upper Makefield. I think it's at the intersection of 532 and Taylorsville Road.
Correct.
And I also looked at condition number one, that this is permitted only on properties located at the intersection of two public streets, one of which shall be an expressway, arterial or major arterial street. I'm not quite clear on definitions of what a arterial, major arterial, but I'm assuming both Route 532 and Taylorsville Road are arterial streets?
Michelle?
They are not.
They are not?
They are not arterial streets. They are major collector streets.
Mrs. Fountain, could you come up to the microphone?
Michelle Fountain spent not a little bit of time on this. She lived and breathed this for a while, and she has...
What's going on with the feedback here? I don't know. This technology is beyond me, I'm sorry.
There is only one arterial in Newtown Township, and that is the bypass. The two roads that you mentioned are, I believe, considered major collectors. If you go into your zoning ordinance in the back in one of the appendices, there is a nice map that shows you the different classifications of the roads.
Ah, cool. But, so, that intersection would not qualify under condition one?
Oh, yes, they would. Those roads would. They are major collector streets.
But it says on condition number one, it... But it says on condition number one, it should be at the intersection, one of which shall be an expressway, arterial, or major arterial street, one of which must be.
Read that back to me, I believe it says it should be major collector street.
Nope. It says only on properties located at the intersection of two public streets, one of which shall be an expressway, arterial, or major arterial street.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna take back what I said. The Newtown Township has one expressway, and that is the bypass.
I'm talking about...
And that is the bypass, so Taylorsville...
I'm talking about Upper Makefield.
Yes, I, I understand. What, the Five Thirty-two and Taylorsville Road is a major arterial road?
So now you're saying the major arterial is not the other type?
An expressway. Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't have it in front of me.
So, I, I, you know, I just need to, maybe this thing needs to be clarified because just my first reading of it is that maybe just one street has to be an expressway or a major arterial road, and the other a less, lesser road. I don't know if that wording in there is clear enough when you have two, intersection of two arterial roads.
Okay, maybe we could clarify that better.
Well, if it says one of which shall be one of those three, and both of them are, then obviously it qualifies.
Correct.
Well, yeah, it also says, uh, I guess you can look at it that way. I just wanted to be very, very clear about it.
You're right, because once, once this gets adopted and that different people get to interpret it, we should be very clear.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. I'm sorry. Does the, does the small word "or" mean anything in that, that reference to the roadways?
You don't wanna use "and" because then, then it would have to be two different things at one time.
Right.
So you have to use "or."
Well, I'm saying, does that clarify either or, what I'm saying?
Sure, sure. I think it's, I think it's crystal clear the way it reads. I think what you'd need to do is reference the highway classification map in the zoning ordinance to determine what specific roads are classified as expressways, arterial, or major arterial roads.
Okay. So again, this, this can go through the jointure. If there's any changes to be made, we can make it during, during the process. But because we're, the clock is ticking, so to speak, we need to get this to the other two townships ASAP.
That's correct.
Can you explain the process one more time? Because I'm very, very confused how this is gonna work. Because you're saying submit it to the jointure meeting, the Joint Zoning Council? That's not submitting it to the towns themselves? Are the other townships looking at this and their planning commissions?
Okay, if the board votes tonight to send this ordinance onto the jointure municipalities, letters will be sent to both Upper Makefield Township manager and Wrightstown manager in closing this ordinance, asking them to submit the ordinance for review to their boards of supervisors and their planning commissions. As part of that, it will then, being that the chairman of the Joint Zoning Council is the chairman of Wrightstown Township, will, he will know about it. And it will be placed onto the agenda of an upcoming Joint Zoning Council meeting to be discussed at that meeting, to be fleshed out, to be commented on. And ultimately, it will go back to each, to all three of the municipalities in order to try to come up with a final version. It, it has to be, it's a long process because you're involving three municipalities.
Are you also involving the Bucks County Planning Commission?
Bucks County Planning Commission will be required to review and comment on this ordinance before it's enacted.
And I think that the planning, Arc Planning Commission sort of was thinking that somehow there needs to be a meeting of the three townships somehow. I guess that goes through the Joint Zoning Commission?
Correct.
If they need to hash out all the differences?
Correct, that's where it'll be hashed out, at the Joint Zoning Council meetings. That's where it's gonna be discussed and debated, and the details discussed, argued about, however you wanna put it, that's where it'll be.
Are those Joint Zoning Council meetings notified to the public? Is that required?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Motion for the, oh, no, we're not even at that, we're still discussing the planning commission. Any, any further questions for Mrs. Driscoll? Yes, sir, you have to come up, you have to come up to the podium. State your name and...
I'm Norm Seager, I'm a resident of Newtown. And you mentioned, one of your recommendations is to reduce the number of pumps? And hasn't Wawa stated that they would make no changes?
Gas station, convenience store ordinance. Not technically Wawa. We, we keep using the word Wawa because everybody loves Wawa.
Right.
But, but it's, it's for any, anybody that applies under a gas station with a convenience store use.
Regardless who it, who it is?
Correct.
And reducing it to how many pumps?
Eighteen instead of sixteen, till we cut it in half.
Eighteen, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir?
I'm Mark, Mark Boda, attention, President. I just wanna point out, there seems to be two standards here involving the hours of operation. The Seven Eleven, I think, operates twenty-four hours a day?
And Dunkin' Donuts also.
Pardon me?
Dunkin' Donuts also.
Yeah, so I just wanna note that there are two standards here and considerably that will be an issue that'll have to be dealt with. But I think you should be aware of that, have your eyes wide open at this time, that's it.
Thank you.
Boda, B-O-A-D-A.
I think we did, I think we did bring that up maybe at our first discussion on this and we figured this use would be a lot more intense.
Well, I mean, you have a seven, not to get into major discussion, you have a Seven Eleven, which is a convenience store?
Right.
Which is right in the middle of town?
Right.
And that's open twenty-four hours, twenty-four hours. This one here will be on the cusp of the township on a major roadway. So, might be a little bit different. Or it could be in Wrightstown on, on a major roadway or whatever.
There are different zoning uses, that's the whole point here, right?
Right. Well, that's why we wanna pass this, so this, that's why we wanna get it through the jointure. So we're not the only ones exposed to this. Shall we let Mrs. Driscoll go home?
I'm sure we're gonna have a lot more discussion at our future meetings, believe me.
Sure, sir, you have something else?
I'm glad that we are looking at other sites. And my main concern is because I live near the intersection where this convenience store is proposed. And by their own numbers, they're saying that twenty-four hundred cars a day would use that exit to get into their station. That's sixteen thousand eight hundred cars a week using that intersection. That's eight hundred and seventy-four thousand cars a year. Now, we know that the bypass is already an accident lane. We have more and more accidents because of the high speed. And introducing that many more cars to that site, I'm not against Wawa, but I am against that site, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand cars. The other concern I have is policing. If it was closer to one of the commercial areas, it certainly would be easier for the township to police that area, being that it's taking business away from downtown and moving it out to the bypass means that our police will have other obligations to get out there and police this seven twenty-four facility. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. I think you're free to go.
Dana, thank you so much, good night.
You're welcome. Okay. Board members, Chairman. As everyone knows, we are currently in the process of looking for someone to fill the seat vacated by Linda Bobrin, who's moved on to be the Register of Wills. Tomorrow, we will be conducting interviews of, I believe, nine applicants in this building, starting at five o'clock and going on until we finish, which we anticipate till maybe about nine. After that process has been completed, the board will naturally look over the applicants, maybe pick a couple that they are favorable to. Because then on the twenty-ninth, which is a week from today, we will be picking that new person to take the seat of Ms. Bobrin. So, we, we have, we have the applicants, they'll be here tomorrow. It is an open meeting, if you wanna sit in, sit in and, and listen, that's fine. The only thing we ask is that any applicant that is here prior to their time should not and will not be allowed in the, in this room so to avoid hearing the questions that are asked of the particular applicant that is being interviewed. Well, we're, we'll start from, we'll start at five. Hopefully, twenty-minute, twenty-minute interval with ten-minute break to get ready for the next one. So, again, as long as everyone shows up for the interviews, we should be done by nine, nine-thirty.
The board will have sandwiches?
Yeah, we'll make sure no one passes out.
And maybe the public can bring in some cupcakes or something?
Well, now, now you're tipping the hand to some of the interviewees that may bring us some good food.
An apple, an apple would be good.
What happened to grapes, John?
That's, that's, that's all that I have to report right now. Mr. Fisher?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Yes, I have a few things. I attended the January fourteen, twenty-twenty meeting of the Environmental Advisory Council. And they had some requests that I spoke to Mr. Lewis about, so I don't wanna get into too much detail. But one of the things was to host HOA, Home Owners Association Forum Workshop sometime in March, here in the public meeting room. And I, they will communicate with Mr. Lewis about that. When they're ready, they wanna discuss things such as the, such as MS four, which has to do with rainwater and pollution, native plants, et cetera. So, we should look forward to that. The other thing was, they applied for and received an Audubon grant of a thousand dollars for native plantings in Helen Randall Park. There was some problem with this grant, and I don't know what the status is from the solicitor's point of view.
Well, it wasn't a problem, wasn't a problem with the grant, board didn't act on it. The board has to act on a grant and order it for it to be submitted and applied for.
Okay, so we can do that after the fact, I imagine?
I don't know if it's after the fact, but it's, if it is so bad, it can be ratified if it hasn't been submitted or, yeah.
Yeah, we recently got the information, I have to vet it with our solicitors, see if it's legal or not. And once it is, we'll bring it to the boards for consideration.
If that's the case, it could be on the next agenda?
Potentially.
Okay, that's all I have for that. And this past Sunday, I, I attended the Seventh Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Teen Peace and Social Justice Summit. It was kicked off with a screening of a movie, Walking While Black, L-O-V-E is the answer. L-O-V-E, in this case, stands for Learn About Others, Open Your Heart to Them, Volunteer to Be Part of the Solution in Their Life, and Empower Others to Do the Same. This was sponsored a lot by the Peace Center and by the Bucks County District Attorney's Office. And I know, at least our chief and Lieutenant Jason Harris had seen this movie prior to that. And so, that was an interesting movie. I didn't stick around for the sessions where they broke out to talk about how to solve this problem. And I know our police department has been doing a good job reaching out to the community through programs such as Coffee with a Cop. And I hope they might come out with some other ways of interacting with the community. The last item has to do with the Newtown Human Relations Commission. I attended their meeting and they did, had a reorganization meeting, the new member, Ivan Wingergar, is that? Weingar? Who was introduced, and they had a chair and they, you know, just reorganized. There's still a vacancy to fill, if anyone is interested, I guess they could contact Olivia, is that correct? And a number to call, maybe, is two-one-five-nine-six-eight-twenty-eight-hundred, extension two-fifty if you're interested in becoming a member of this commission. And I believe the Chair of the Commission would like to make a presentation before the board at some point. So I imagine he'll be contacting Mr. Lewis about that. And I think that's all I have to report, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
May I have the park and rec report? Upcoming programs with parks and recreation. We have creative yoga, princess yoga, super scientists, fundamentals of investing, and the five reasons why you can't lose weight. And that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, sir. On to engineers' report.
Thank you. Tonight, we are seeking authorization to advertise the 2020 Liquid Fuels Road Program bid. This is just the township's annual road program, which includes roadway resurfacing, sidewalk replacement, handicap ramp replacement, and various drainage improvements. The base bid is roughly four point one-three miles of township road. So tonight, we're just seeking authorization to publicly bid the project.
How long do you think it would take for bids, or what's the deadline for bids to come in?
I'm anticipating mid-February to take the bids, and then we would possibly award in March. So either the March, the first meeting in March or this summer.
So the project could proceed probably in April, or?
It would probably be late April.
Weather, weather permitting?
Weather permitting, yeah, late April, early May to start.
Great.
Is there, is there a second round to this? Because I know we were talking about five point two miles?
Yep, so we modified a few roads that were previously included in the base bid to cater to the sewer authority work that's being done, so we included them as alternate bids. So once the sewer work is complete, we can, depending on how the bids come in as well, we could add those roads back in.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so we need a motion for this. Oh, does she have a question?
I will definitely make a motion, 'cause one of those alternate roads is my street.
Yeah, motion is second.
Second.
A motion is second, any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor? Aye, any opposed, passes four zero.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Solicitor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on our report that has not already been dealt with is the board's approval of the written decision granting a PRD variance for Kevin and Jennifer Johnson at sixteen Meridian Circle. Recall, at your last meeting, a public hearing was held wherein the board voted to grant a PRD variance to allow the Johnsons to retain a patio that has already been installed, and also to add additional river rock as landscaping on their property. We've prepared a written decision, and if the board is of a mind, it would be a motion to approve that written decision.
Okay, do I have such a motion?
Some move.
You have a second?
Second.
The motion is second, any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor? Aye, any opposed, passes four zero.
Next item on our report is the zoning hearing board application that's been filed by Provco Pineville Acquisitions LLC. This is the equitable owner of the property on Lower Silver Lake Road across from the Crossing Community Church. They have filed an application challenging the substantive validity of the joint municipal zoning ordinance alleging that it is unconstitutional because it does not provide for a combined gas station and convenience store use. There have been several continuances of the opening of that hearing. It is now scheduled for March fifth, two thousand twenty, unless discussions can take place between the township and the applicant to try to settle that. But ultimately, that will go forward, and it's before the board tonight so that the board could consider whether it wishes to take a position on that application. And if so, what that position is, and whether to send the solicitor to undertake that position in front of the zoning hearing board.
How does our curative amendment, which we just passed not too long ago, affect this situation?
Unfortunately, it doesn't. This was filed prior to the enactment of the curative amendment. The substantive validity challenge is gonna go forward regardless... The substantive validity challenge is going to go forward regardless of how the curative amendment goes. What the curative amendment did was it stopped any others from challenging the ordinance and seeking site-specific relief.
Okay, so if the, this is going to go before our zoning hearing board?
Correct.
Now, if our zoning hearing board were to vote in the positive for Provco, what happens then?
If it's not an appealed decision, and that decision becomes final, Provco will be allowed to develop a combination gas station convenience store on the property that they have control of over there on Lower Silver Lake Road according to the plans that they submit to the zoning hearing board and that are approved by the zoning hearing board. They have, they just have to come in for land development, of course. This is just going to the use of, of the property. But there is some case law that holds that they would be entitled by law to develop the property because they were successful in challenging the constitutionality of the zoning ordinance. So while they'd have to come for land development, there's no denying it because they're allowed to have site-specific relief.
Does their, their decision to do this or the unconstitutionality have anything to do with the decision that still hasn't been rendered in Plumsteadville?
Well, that, Plumstead's case is before the Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania. The Court of Common Pleas of Bucks County found that the Plumstead, excuse me, township zoning ordinance was unconstitutional because it did not provide for a combination gas station convenience store. That was appealed by Plumstead Township to the Commonwealth Court. The Commonwealth Court has heard argument on that, and we're waiting for the Commonwealth Court to render a decision. If it turns out that the decision in that case is that the ordinance is not unconstitutional, that will certainly help us in front of our own zoning hearing board in the legal argument aspect because we will cite to the Commonwealth Court case in Plumstead that says that you don't have to provide for the separate use. But it's, every zoning ordinance is different, and every proposal is different, and that won't necessarily stop the Provco challenge from going forward. It will hinder Provco's challenge legally, though.
Okay, but, but let me understand this. Any lack of decision made in the Plumsteadville case? Couldn't that prolong Provco from doing because there really hasn't been a decision made in regards to this type of positioning?
Well, they, they can move their substantive validity challenge forward before our zoning hearing board. Our zoning hearing board is going to have to make a decision. That decision will probably be appealed because if it's granted, I would think that either, either the township, if it desires, or other parties that may enter their appearance before the zoning hearing board would probably appeal that decision. If it's denied, Provco will appeal it. So thinking forward, that will be way down the line and probably toward the latter part of this year. And we suspect that the Plumstead decision and probably the Hatboro, Borough decision along similar lines from Montgomery County will be rendered by the Commonwealth Court by that time. And again, not absolutely apply to Provco's application, but hinder them, extremely hinder them legally.
Okay, and if this delay goes into process and our E30 ordinance is going through the jointure, does that buy us any additional time in regards to holding off anything being done?
No, we have a hard deadline of nine months after, I guess it's December?
11.
11, thank you, to enact an ordinance. And that is within the four corners of the section of the municipality's planning code called municipal curative amendment. We've declared that our ordinance may be unconstitutional, and we have decided to try to fix that. The decision that comes down from the courts may influence the townships to say, well, if the Plumstead case is overturned and their ordinance is okay, then maybe ours is okay, and we don't need to fix it. So after the nine months, we don't enact an ordinance. I don't think that's particularly good idea because then you have an appeal, a potential appeal from the Commonwealth Court's decision to the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania, who, and it's probably a case of first impression, and I think the Supreme Court would probably hear it. And if the Supreme Court reverses the Commonwealth Court, then you're back to square one, and you can't, you can't enact an ordinance because you're barred for three years from, for another municipal cure.
All right, now that you confused everybody. Any other questions for Mr. Sanders?
I was going to say, on the converse of that, if, if we develop our E30 ordinance, would that then say to Provco that, that hey, we've, we've got our ordinance, can, can we fit this together?
Well, you know, if, we have, we've drafted an ordinance that we think makes sense. Right now, right now, the state of the law is that we've got to provide for those uses. And, you know, I don't know what the future holds as far as the decision goes. Maybe the decision affirms the Common Pleas Court, and, you know, Plumstead's unconstitutional, and we really do have to provide for this use. But again, each zoning ordinance is different, you know. We would make an argument that we have convenience stores, and we have gas stations, and that if you want to propose it together, you're either proposing two principal uses on the same lot or you're proposing one principal use with one accessory use. And whether that's permitted on the parcel that they are equitable owners of up there, I don't know offhand. But we will be prepared with that kind of data and testimony before the zoning hearing board if the board desires to send us to take part in that.
So the, I'm sorry, Dennis.
But, and that, the zoning hearing board on this case is March 6, did you say?
Right now, it's March 5, Thursday, March 5. It's continued to, yes.
So the question before us is whether we want to send you or a letter to the zoning hearing board opposing it or not?
Correct.
And I would make a case that if, there are several variances that they're asking for. I don't know how many, maybe a dozen or so?
Exactly, there's 12.
12?
Yes.
And, you know, if that zoning hearing board gives away all those variances, then I'm concerned that other property owners in the OR district, such as the church across the street, which has a similar plot of land perhaps that they might want to sell, might want to go before the zoning hearing board and get variances for something else. And then the next one down the line. I mean, if you give it to one, you know, company, why not to another property owner? So I don't, you know, I would be under the impression that perhaps we should oppose this not only because of that, but because we are amending our zoning, and we would prefer that the zoning hearing board not give away variances, but wait until we have a new, you know, zoning ordinance where we have more control over what's being built there.
I agree with John. I, I say we fight and send a solicitor to oppose.
Okay, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Just to, just to show that I'm also supportive of these guys.
I guess, Mr. Solicitor, for legal lease purposes, how should the motion read so we're not confused in anything here?
It would be a motion to authorize the township, in the person of the township solicitor, to attend the zoning hearing board appeal filed by Provco Pineville Acquisitions LLC and oppose that application.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. Any other questions from the board, from the public on this motion? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes four zero. Go get him, babe.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Finally, last item on our agenda is consideration to send the, I'm going to not even call it E-anything ordinance. I'm going to call it the combined gas station convenience store ordinance to the jointure as previously discussed exhaustively earlier this evening.
Does that include the changes the planning commission was recommending?
That's up to the board.
That's on.
Can the planning commission submit a letter of their change, you know, changes that go?
I think we would, I think we would probably do that. We'd send the ordinance as is to the jointure municipalities and note in the cover letter that our planning commission has reviewed it, and here were their specific comments. Here you go.
Because I'm assuming we're going to get the comments from the other planning commissions and so on. So for us to change the ordinance because of this, I think we should wait until we get other comments back, and then maybe.
I would, I would think that's a good idea, but we don't want to let our planning commission's comments go unaddressed, so I would, I would absolutely attach them to the correspondence.
Is that agreeable to everyone or?
Yes.
Yep.
I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
A motion is second. Any other questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes four zero.
Mr. Sanders would make it easy for us, too.
Thank you all. Thank you.
On to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance as of this evening is $1,483,064. Plan expiration is before the board with no action required. And we have Chief Forsyth to give his monthly report. Evening, Chief.
Good day, Chief.
Good evening. The monthly report for November for Newtown Fire Rescue, this includes emergency services and the Fire Association. For the month of November, we had 118 calls. I'll break them down for you. It was two building fires, seven dwelling fires, two brush fires, one service call, two vehicle extracations, 64 EMS calls, 22 good intent calls, 20 alarm systems, for a total of 118 calls. Our safety inspections, we did 49 in the township. That's 39 annual inspections and 10 re-inspections. And in Newtown Borough, we did 26, 25 safety inspections with one re-inspection. Our training for the month of November, the Fire Association had 246 hours of training, and emergency services had 128 hours of training. Our highlighted events, emergency services staff completed their refresher class for traffic incident management. This was a class that we took with the police department to try to make our personnel and staff safer on the highways. November, we participated in a mutual aid drill with Middletown Township Emergency Services. This was a drill to make us more proficient in handling large vehicle extracations. We were at St. Mary Medical Center and actually rolled over a tractor and trailer onto a vehicle. The staff was there, and we conducted these exercises to make us more proficient whenever we have to perform that service. November, we assisted two Newtown Grant residents in a home safety inspection. We've made this offer to the homeowners of Newtown Grant to try to give them the information on the alarm systems and smoke detectors in their area. So that's what we did in November. November, I told you at the November State of Meeting, we had a large meeting with a lot of fire chiefs and Congressman Fitzpatrick and several state representatives to try to address the current status of volunteers in the, in the state of Pennsylvania. We are in dire need of volunteers, and there's a lot of people trying to get involved to see if we can come up with a solution to try to come up with a way to get more volunteers. So if anyone would like to be a volunteer firefighter, go on newtownfire.com. There's applications there. We'd be more than happy to talk to you and get you involved with us.
All right, Chief, what is the age requirement?
We are taking juniors at 16. They, at 16, between 16 and 18, they're trained and they're, they're taught how to do a lot of things. At 18, they become an active member, and they're permitted to do everything a firefighter can do.
At 16, since they're still in high school, is, does this fulfill any kind of community requirement for them or?
They can use them for their links hours at the high school. And there's a lot of restrictions between 16 and 18 because of child labor laws. There are certain hours that they can volunteer and certain hours they can't. So there's, there's a lot of things they can do, and we're looking for all the help that we can get at this point. Any other questions for November? December was a slower month. We had 105 calls for service. I'll break that down for you. One building fire, five dwelling fires, one brush fire, one service call, one vehicle extrication, 56 EMS calls, 21 good intent calls, 19 fire alarms. The month of December, we did 81 inspections in Newtown Township. Eighty of them were the fire safety inspection, and one was a re-inspection. In Newtown Borough, we did 29 safety inspections. For the training for the month of December, NFA had 75 hours of training, and emergency services had 148 hours. Our highlighted events for December, the emergency services staff completed their annual refresher on emergency vehicle operation. This gives us a recertification to operate the apparatus that we use. We assisted Northampton Township Fire Department with a working fire in Northampton Township. And the, the big event for December was the Fire Association escorting Santa around the township on December 21. That's a huge event, and the public really enjoys it. So that's our December report.
Any questions for the Chief? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too.
Thank you, Chief. And I think it's important to, to recognize the training that both the volunteer departments and our paid staff put in every month. I know recently they've, they've been on several difficult calls. And without that training and without their dedication, I don't, I don't think it would have gone as well as it did. So on behalf of the Township Chief, I, I truly appreciate all your efforts and, and your staff.
The next two items under my report have to do with the, the billion-dollar highway loan. Please recall that in the budget this year that we had allocated another million dollars for road paving and surfacing. The first of which is to, for the board's authorization to accept proposals for financing of the highway loans. This is for the, for my staff and myself to go out to banks and, and issue an RFP for the financing of that million dollars.
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion is second. Any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes four zero.
Thank you. The second which, second of which is for the authorization for the solicitor to draft and advertise the ordinance for the highway loan and authorize preparation and submission of all required borrowing documents to DCED for approval. This is the other half of, of what's required. Once we obtain quotes, the successful bidder for the financing needs to be incorporated into an ordinance because we're using dedicated tax mileage to pay off that loan. So I'd frame that motion, and I would entertain.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion is second. Which one of you guys want the second?
Whoever.
Well, for the secretary, I don't want her. A motion is second. Any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes four zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing else.
Thank you. Minutes, bills, list, and reports. Mr. Mack?
Okay, first of all, I would like to thank Kyle Davis for doing an excellent job filling in for me at the last meeting. I especially liked your rendition of the approval of interfund transfers. Magnificent. So I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 6, 2020 Board of Supervisors reorganization meeting.
A motion is our second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes four zero.
Second, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 8, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting, which I did not attend.
A motion is our second.
Second.
A motion is second. Any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, I call the questions. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay, passes 301.
Is it okay that you made the motion if it was not there?
Yes.
I guess you can make, you can make the motion, can't you?
Okay, now on to the famous bills list of January 22, 2020, Hold on a second.
What do you read?
Sorry. Sorry. I revise that.
John, I don't want your job. Make sure you get it right.
I got it all written down too.
Kyle did such a good job.
Yeah. Okay, I make a motion that we pay our bills list, according to bills list dated January twenty-second, twenty-twenty, totaling a hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifteen cents.
Okay, motion of a second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, that, that ten thousand dollars I was talking about had to do with sweeper parts and repairs. I mean, how many sweepers do we have?
We have one.
We have one. I mean, this is a, a lot of repairs, it looks like it.
It's a very old machine and the parts are hard to get.
Okay.
Okay.
Lastly, I make a motion to approve.
Wait, wait, wait.
Sorry, we got a vote on it.
We got a vote on it. Motion is second. You asked a question. Any questions for the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Any pose? Passes four zero.
All right, let me see if I can get this straight. I make a motion to approve interfund transfers as per the bills list dated January twenty-second, twenty-twenty, totaling two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and zero cents.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions for the board? From the public, seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Any pose? Passes four zero. Thank you, Mr. Mack. Onto our second round of public comment. Anyone that has any thing they want to say, please come up to the podium. Well, I think you're on the agenda.
Getting a position.
Oh. Okay, sorry. All right, next, we have old business. Before we get on to this, does anyone else have any old business that they would like to talk about?
I guess I would like to mention that we, and I think it has been mentioned once or twice this evening, that we do still have some vacancies on our boards and commissions. I think there's still two vacancies on the technology and communications. John mentioned the one on HARB. I think there's still one on Park and Rec. I'm doing this off, off the top of my head because I buried my notes here.
I believe there's some on the Veterans, Veterans Committee.
Yep. I think there's still two or three on the Veterans Committee.
Okay.
I, I am aware that we had a couple of letters of interest. Alex Tries was interested in the Veterans Committee and Shelley Holland was interested in the technology and communication. So I don't know if we could get their letters of interest distributed to the board. Maybe next time we can.
Everyone should have copies tonight, correct?
Yes. Oh, they do? Okay.
So just, we'll put them on the agenda for official, for a motion to approve at the next meeting.
Okay. Sounds good.
Any other old business?
I have one item, if you don't mind. At the December eleventh, twenty-nineteen board meeting, I mentioned that I would try to find sponsors to offset the cost of subscribing to the Savvy Citizen mobile-based notification application. As of today, I have three or four local Newtown businesses that have committed to pay five hundred dollars each to sponsor this app. One is the Harvest Seasonal Grill, a ridge, uh, village, a restaurant in the village at Newtown Shopping Center. The other is Johnson, Kendall Johnson and Insurance Financial Company in the Newtown Business Commons. And I have a Realtor, Beverly Herring, and also First National Bank of Newtown expressed interest. So that's a total of four businesses that would commit a total of two thousand dollars to the yearly cost of about twenty-two thousand dollars, uh, twenty, twenty-two hundred dollars.
You're probably right at twenty-two thousand.
No, 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 twenty-two hundred.
Well, with someone maintaining it.
There's no maintain it. It's a, it's a monthly fee of two hundred and something dollars, of which, so this is covering, these four would cover ninety percent of that. Now, there's a six hundred dollar, one-time fee for installation, training and some marketing. And I am happy to donate six hundred dollars from my yearly stipend to cover that cost. So I'm looking for another sponsor. If you're interested, we have still need to talk about this at a future meeting, maybe February twelfth. If the board is of a mind to add this to the budget and have that expense almost totally covered and if able to send out at least twelve to fifteen messages per month via the system, which doesn't seem to be a lot, but it could be very helpful. So I'm just making that announcement and hopefully be able to come back in February and, uh, uh, talk about it some more and possibly make a motion before the board.
Yeah, I think that some other things that need to be done is our solicitor to check out the township offering advertising space on certain things. Well, I'm not, I'm not done.
I'm not, I didn't, I didn't have to interrupt you though, sorry.
And not only that is, um, I just feel that the, the township is not in the business of soliciting advertisers. We're a government, you know, government-run, uh, operation. And now how do we decide who to exclude and who to include on, on advertising? Are we now a advertising company taking advertisers for profit? Or, you know, I, I just think you're opening up the floodgates for people to just keep coming to us saying, I want to advertise here, I want to advertise there. I, I, you know, if, if it's legal, then maybe that is something to do. But also understand that the cost is just for the operation of this system itself. There's still a cost to have someone to maintain it. And I know you had said, oh, maybe the manager can maintain it, but that would take away from other things that he's doing. Unless you want to give the manager an additional stipend of a, but ten thousand dollars or something like that, maybe he would consider it. But when you mentioned in a Freudian slip, twenty-two thousand, I think that was more of a, more of a figure than twenty-two hundred. So I think there's a lot of things in consideration here. And just going out to get, get solicit people to advertise, I, I don't know if that's what the township wants to be in the business of doing.
Well, not too long ago, I seem to remember you put forward a notion of advertising on police cars. So I recall that, but this is not something that the township is handling. This goes through Savvy Citizen. Any arrangements for sponsorships would be through Savvy Citizen, not through the township. I'm just trying to help Savvy Citizen get sponsors. And this is a personal effort on my part as a citizen, as any citizen could do. And as far as cost of maintaining, there is no cost. It's built into the subscription fee. Anything that needs to be maintained has to be handled by the subscription fee. Yes, somebody, and it could be several people, not just the township manager, but for example, the Public Works Director can put out a notice that there's going to be pothole repairs. The Parks and Rec Department can put out a couple of notices about special events, such as Super Science Sunday, for example, coming up in March. The police department can use it. They already send out notices via Twitter, but there are very few people actually on Twitter and they could also send out the exact same notice that they do on emergencies through this system. So the township manager and his assistant may only have to send out a couple of messages a month regarding public meetings such as this one, the meeting, any special meetings that we might have, that sort of thing.
Well, I don't know. You had just mentioned that a lot of people are on Twitter.
A lot of people are not on Twitter, I said. I said a lot of people are not on Twitter.
Not on Twitter. I used the word not. You had mentioned that they're not on Twitter, but right now with this announcement, go out and be on Twitter and get the, uh, get the responses from the police department. I get them from the police department on Facebook, on Twitter. I get the Patch. I get the NBC Ten. I get so many notifications that doesn't cost this township a, a penny. But in this case, we're going to go out and solicit advertisers. And right now, nobody's on Savvy Citizen. So that's, that's the other thing is you have, the people have to want to apply to get on to the Savvy. Just like you just mentioned about they're not on Twitter, well, people have to apply to get on Twitter. So it's the people that have to actually go on and get the app, just like they have to do with Twitter. So I, I mean, and again, those services are for free. Well, you, you brought up something for, for discussion and I think, like you said, we'll go into February or whatever and then see what we can do.
Thank you.
Yes, I guess we're just waiting for February so we can get our next presentation going.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda is our consultant for Strategic Management Planning Program.
It's, um, good evening. My name is Dan Connolly. I'm a director with Econsol Solutions. Thank you inviting for, uh, thank you for inviting my colleagues and I in to talk about the Strategic Management Planning Program. I'm glad we were able to follow up after the December weather event that, uh, precluded us coming out. But you, we put together some PowerPoint slides that described our proposal. I can talk a little bit about the program in general if you have any further questions. First, a little bit about my team. My name is Dan Connolly. Like I said, I was a, I'm a director with Econsol. Been with Econsol, working with them for five or six years, officially with the firm for like two years and have about fourteen years of multi-year financial planning, public finance experience. I'm here with my colleague Dave Unkovic from McNeese Wallace Nurk, who has over thirty years of bond lawyer municipal. Forty years of experience and Steve Ray, who has over thirty years of government and combined government and consulting experience himself. He's also with Econsol Solutions. Used to be, used to lead the Pennsylvania Economy League and has a wide range of experience. You know, flipping through our, our presentation here, beyond the three of us who made it out here this evening, we have a, a pretty deep bench. On our team is also a public safety expert. We have a, a labor lawyer expertise and a deep bench of analysts that can do a lot of the, the number crunching and, uh, sort of the analytical heavy lifting that would be required in a report like this. We have worked particularly, have particularly strong experience with Pennsylvanian municipalities, but a, a deep experience with governments in general. The slide after our personnel, so, so they're, they're not numbered on, uh, in the book there, shows that we, we've worked with municipalities of all shapes and sizes, financial strengths ranging from, uh, used to be triple-A rated Montgomery County down to distressed communities, smaller communities like the Borough of Colwin and, and larger cities like Philadelphia. So we run the gamut and can do just about anything, not just multi-year financial planning, by the way, but also, uh, public finance, economic development, transportation, basically anywhere where public finance intersects with government. I want to talk a little bit about our approach to the multi-year financial plan. If we were engaged, we would begin with a kickoff meeting that would establish a project timeline and goals. And we'd provide the township with an information request to, to get going. That information request would include financial audits, general ledger account detail, former, past operating and capital budgets, debt, loan documentations, basically anything that, that touches your financial statement. We would also spend a lot of time speaking directly with, uh, the, the folks who are running the township itself. Talk to department heads, labor leaders, all the key stakeholders. We also believe that public input is very key to developing a well-rounded financial plan. And in, in the middle of the development phase, we would plan to have a, a public meeting to, to present some initial financial findings, which, you know, we can get into those deliverables in just a second. And also collect feedback on the, those findings themselves and recommendations to push the township forward. As far as deliverables and approach goes, you know, there, there are a couple of different phases that we take in our approach. The first would be a financial conditions and assessment, uh, report. It would be a report. It would be a, um, a PowerPoint deliver, deliverable that we would give to you. We would review the township's financial condition over a period of time rather than just a snapshot. And based on those trends, we would project out into the future to establish a baseline forecast. And the baseline would assume that the township keeps on going as the trends predict and you don't make any corrective action. This is an exercise in nature. No management team ever does nothing. But it's, it's a communication tool to show if we do nothing, if we sit on our hands, you know, we're, we're going to be in a position that is probably not so desirable. The next phase of the project would be identifying ways to improve your bottom line fiscal position. And that's where we get into management audit, departmental reviews, identify economic development strategies and develop recommendations that would, um, you know, improve, take that baseline forecast that we started with and create a revised, uh, improved financial forecast. Part of our engagement in our proposal includes a citizen and employee survey. And for other municipalities, we've done that online and we've gotten some pretty good, uh, reception from that. And elected officials and managers like it, because it's actual like, you know, data that they could touch and feel. And we, we include all the caveats about, you know, scientific nature of surveys and that. But it, but it is something that, it's an outreach tool to the residents and it's also some data that can be used to make decisions. Combine, combining the financial conditions assessment and your management audit and some of those analysis that we do, we create the multi-year plan that would include a revised financial forecast, a set of recommendations, and also an implementation plan, how to put this into action. Each recommendation would include a responsible party, a timeline in, to get the actions done and the financial implication year by year of each recommendation. That is our approach in, in a nutshell. It would take us, depending on when we can schedule meetings and, uh, when council, excuse me, supervisor meetings fall, about forty-five months to complete. And we're ready to get going immediately if you wish to engage our team. So that, that's our presentation.
Any questions from the board?
So it would take about four to five months?
Generally, um, yes, like I said, the, the couple of things that sometimes slow it down is if there, there's an issue sorting with, through the information request or like I said, you know, a conflict comes up in, in, when we're supposed to present our final report at a council meet or a supervisor's meeting, so you got to delay it a month or something like that, generally four to five months. Since we're starting, starting somewhere early in the year, we'll have no problem getting this done before you enter the next budget cycle, which is really when you put this into action, right? So we, we got plenty of room in that respect.
Are there milestones along the way, like an interim report or?
Yes, absolutely. The, the first report that we'll deliver would be the financial conditions and trends analysis. So, and that, uh, we think is important for a couple of reasons. First, it kind of sets the parameters. This is the playing field that we're working with here. It, it also gives you the chance to look at the assumptions we're using to project out into the future. And it's also a communication tool to the, to the public, which frankly, most of the elected officials we deal with and the managers think is pretty useful, say, this is why we have to make these tough decisions and this is why you come to the council meetings and we kind of go back and forth because if we do nothing, this is where we end up. So that, that, that would be the, uh, the first report. We'd have a, a public meeting, kind of reacting to that and also collecting inputs. Like, okay, well, what do you think about this? What could the township do to improve things? And then by the end, we, uh, deliver our final report. It's been common that we do it in a public meeting like, like this. The highlights, not the whole thing, because the report's going to be kind of long. We, we, we would keep it short.
I have a couple of questions. How much is this, do you think, would cost the township?
I think our proposal is for sixty-nine thousand. It's covered by fifty percent by a DCED match.
That's correct.
Okay, so thirty-five thousand or so out of our pocket, basically.
Yes.
In your, um, what the hell's the matter with this? But in your experience, have you, uh, have you experienced with technology? I know you're probably financial.
I know you're probably financial guys, but I've heard that technology can be used to reduce costs. Do you have any experience with, you know, evaluating the technology that we may be using?
Well, can I turn it over to my colleague Steve Ray, who's, can I answer that in a couple of different ways?
Sure. Thank you, and good evening. E-Consult and ESI Thought Lab, which is an arm of our E-Consult Solutions organization, does serious work on smart city technologies. So we have, over the last two years, done two major global surveys and analysis of how cities and communities are using technology to improve their economy, to improve their operations, and to improve the quality of life for citizens. So looking at all aspects of that. We are not specifically technology experts ourselves to be able to say, hey, does that one work well or not? But what we are is capable of saying, what are the benefits of applying technology, of using new technologies that can help improve the quality of services that you're providing?
Well, would you look at, for example, I know sometimes it's very expensive to buy technology equipment versus leasing it and then being able to keep up to date with more modern equipment?
That's probably more in Dan's financial management side. Yeah, I mean, we've, we aren't tech experts, but we do deal, we have encountered a lot of different financial systems, for example, and we're dealing with one municipality that has an archaic system, and one of our recommendations is going to be to invest in new software. I will point out that this STMP, the Strategic Management Planning Program, we're in, you know, the DCD calls it Phase One. Nobody's obliged to go forward, however, and do a Phase Two or subsequent phases. However, if there is a recommendation that we put into the report, say, oh, Newtown Township should, you know, implement this sort of technology, we recommend this for Phase Two, you have the option to apply and potentially getting a matching grant for that implementation item. So we have had experiences with other municipalities where the DCD rep that we've been working with have said, you know, make it explicit, you know, STMP Phase Two. In this particular instance, it was for an economic development plan. But they are anxious to, you know, open opportunities for follow-on implementation items.
So Phase Two would be another $16,900?
It would vary depending on the nature of the project. I, the grants could go, I think, they can go up to like 150, I believe, or they can be smaller. I mean...
I mean, couldn't we implement some of what you're talking about without hiring consultants again?
Yeah, probably. Yeah, I mean, and, you know, maybe some of Phase Two doesn't involve in hiring a consultant at all.
Are we supposed to ask some of these questions, Dennis, do you think?
For the public, we had about 11 questions, and I think we've had three or four of them already, so.
Do you have any other ones, Dennis?
Just, I guess the other, the other one that I had was, do you help us with that handoff at the end? Will you give us the report? Would you try to decide if we need, want to do Phase, a Phase Two project? How do we roll it out to the community? I think you mentioned having a meeting at the end.
Yeah, I mean, the, the main handoff for the presentation is our final deliverable. And we'll obviously provide a draft of the report to the township ahead of time. But we would do a public presentation of the report itself. The, the report will have the final chapter, which would be a compilation of all the recommendations and how they should be implemented in terms, in terms of who would lead that initiative, the timeline, and the financial implications of each of the recommendations. And then our engagement would stop at that point. If there are, you know, ways that we can be helpful in making a smoother transition or ensuring its implementation to the best we can, you know, we want this to be, to work for the township.
You finished, Dennis?
Yeah.
The...
Do you have any questions?
The, there was a POTS Town study that was provided that you have recommendations to them. It seemed a little bit similar to Newtown, and I think you made a number of recommendations. And how enthusiastic was POTS Town in implementing what you recommended? I mean, it might have included a call for temporary or permanent tax increases, I think.
You know, ironically enough, well, it was mixed. I mean, nobody's in love with, because the report had probably 50 recommendations plus. I mean, it's a pretty in-depth report, and nobody's going to be, love all of them, and nobody's going to hate every single one. Most probably won't hate every single one. And I remember distinctly one of our recommendations, because we thought economic development was so important for a community like POTS Town, to build the economic base, to ensure long-term fiscal stability, that they lay off the tax cuts for a year or two. Or, excuse me, tax increases for a year or two. They, they have the second highest mileage rate in all of Montgomery County. They are a high-tax municipality. And they had a fund balance that was pretty hefty, 25% of general fund expenses. You know, and why don't you give your taxpayers a little bit of a break and, you know, don't discourage investment in the city? They went ahead and raised taxes anyways. That, you know, when we make the, the report, it doesn't become law. It's, some municipalities use it as a starting port for a discussion. So it was, it was mixed there. You know, they, I know that they also had some successes in implementing some of our labor-related recommendations. That is something that Dave's team does, is particularly strong with in terms of reviewing labor contracts and identifying, you know, fair but efficient ways to get into longer-term or multi-year collective bargaining agreements, since that's going to be, what, 70 to 80% of your general fund expenses or personnel costs? And they add a lot of gains on, on that front. So, I mean, it's a mixed bag.
So you know that Newtown does not have 25% of general fund balances?
That's correct. Yeah, yeah, I am aware.
It looks like, you know, we only have enough for another year of deficit spending, it seems to me. So I'm not going to ask you to make any recommendations now, but you're going to have to publicize, you're talking about publicizing the report, I mean, you're talking about doing a survey, having input from residents, interviewing personnel, hired staff. What about speaking with the elected officials? Is that part of your program?
Yes, well, we're happy to speak with the elected officials for your perspective as well. We want a well-rounded report with as many perspectives as we can get.
I think somebody mentioned a business survey, Dennis.
I know we've, we've had discussions with the Finance Committee about doing a business survey, whether the two can be put together somehow.
Yeah, and maybe we would talk about that. The more specialized you get with some of these surveys, the just, the more labor-intensive they can be. And we want to be accommodating. We want to hit all the goals that you want to accomplish with this report. We just want to...
Well, you know, the Finance Committee would like to do a survey, which is probably different than the survey you're talking about for citizens, for the public, correct? So I think they could go hand in hand if we decide to do that. Would you take into consideration any results from that business survey that may be done independently of you?
We'd be happy to take into, yeah, absolutely. I mean, we have a pretty wide range of data that we request to begin with. And if you have survey results from business, you know, one point of emphasis that, just as a firm, we have is the idea of a sustainable tax base being the key to long-term fiscal stability. And knowing what your business community, what they like about the community, what they think could be improved is very, very important to forming your economic development strategy.
Okay, I think that's all I have.
And you've had experience with jointure projects, and we've had a lot of talk about the jointure this evening.
We have a lot of experience with intergovernmental cooperation agreements and municipalities working together.
So you've done that, okay. Any other questions? We do have the Chair of our Finance Committee here, and I don't know if, Jack, you have any questions to ask of this gentleman?
Can I have a premiere?
No, you got to come up here. It's only a little walk.
Getting late. I'll, I'll leave you with two. One, could you please explain the nature of the partnership with the other two firms that are part of your proposal? And then the second question was, your proposal focused a lot on the income statement, revenue and expenses. Could you address, to what extent will you look at the balance sheet? In other words, we have outstanding debt. Is that analyzed as part of your process? And even the asset side, do you examine any opportunities to, to leverage assets that the township may have?
Well, first, yes, please, Dave. Dave hasn't had the chance.
I won't be a silent partner here. My name's Dave Unkovic. I'm with McNeese Wallace and Nurk, a law firm based in Harrisburg. I work in the Lancaster office. And our firm has cooperated with E-Consult Solutions on a number of assignments like this. And as a law firm, we're focused more on the things that are more legally driven. So the labor contracts we look at in particular. We also look at sometimes the relationships between the municipality and their utility authorities, water and sewer and so forth, and, and look at those relationships. And those can have an effect on the balance sheet as opposed to the income statement when you're looking at not just the debt, which Dan can talk about, but also the assets. And there's some municipalities that want to utilize those assets by selling them or whatever to try to help on the liability side of the balance sheet. So sometimes we look at that. But we mostly do the legal stuff. And then there's also SRW Strategies, which is a consultant who is a former police chief and a lot of experience in, in the police and fire area, who helps a lot with those issues, which are often very important.
Right, and specifically about the debt question, well, we're going to look at the township's outstanding debt. I believe there's only one significant loan that's issued in 2017, probably not callable until 2022.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, and then, we will, there are new federal regulations that preclude non-registered firms from doing too much of that analysis. But we can do enough that I think can be helpful to the township.
Mr. Manager, what action does the board have to take tonight?
Mr. Chairman, the appropriate action would be consideration to award the five-year financial plan proposal to E-Consult Solutions Incorporated. An amount of $69,000. Hang on, give me one second.
$450, I think.
$450, correct.
All right, if I have such a motion?
I would make that motion.
Do I have a second? No second?
Any second?
I don't have to. No second, I guess it dies for lack of a second vote. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, there was no motion. There was no motion and second. There was a motion, no second, so there's no comment. Any new business? Okay, seeing none. I guess motion to adjourn. So moved. Thank you, everyone.